So I am going to call to order the annual Fall Town Meeting of the Town of Milis for November 2023. First order of business, couple of announcements. First of all, I would like to take the opportunity to call out our state representatives who are here today. Some of you may have met them already. James Arina DeRosa and Marcus Vaughn. If you gentlemen could stand up. And welcome to our town meeting, and we appreciate your service to us as legislators. All I can say is you can be sure we'll come and ask for more. Uh-oh. The second item I'd like to bring up really is an announcement that the town moderator, who couldn't make it tonight, asked me to nevertheless make this announcement, and I'm happy to do so. This is just a reminder to everyone that on Saturday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m., which is the 11th month, the 11th day, and the 11th hour, the Milis American Legion Post 208 and the Milis Ambettes Post 495 will hold a Veterans Day ceremony to commemorate the formal ending of World War I. The event will take place at the Milis World War I Memorial in front of the American Legion at 136 Kerr Street. In addition to the usual presenters, featured speaker will include Navy Commander Evan P. Wright, who is a Milis resident, a graduate of the United States Naval Academy, and most recently, the commanding officer of the USS Cooperstown. Milis Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Milis High School band, Milis Police and Fire Departments will participate, but the ceremony, keep in mind, will honor all veterans who have served, both past and present, in defense of our country. Everyone is invited to attend this meeting, so please, if you have the opportunity, stop by on Saturday to help honor our veterans. So now what I'd like to do is commence some of the business of the meeting by asking everyone to stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to be rewarded for which it stands, on creation, under God, in individual, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As we begin, many of you are veterans of the town meeting and some are fairly new, so I'm going to go over the rules of procedure very briefly so that everyone knows how the meeting will actually proceed. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you for your commitment to your community. This is a night where the citizens of the town have the absolute right to vote on the appropriations that are being presented before you receive. I'm sure you're aware of the fact that this is one of the last vestiges of pure democracy in the United States or around the world, the open town meeting, and we have the privilege today of being able to hold that town meeting and asking for everyone to participate. Here tonight are a number of people and bodies that have been worked very hard to present the information which you will have presented before you today. This includes the Board of Selectmen. Notice how I can't remember what year it is, the Select Board? I'm sorry. School Committee. We also have the members of the Finance Committee, and we have the members of the administration, such as the Town Administrator, who have participated in the preparation of the material for you to consider tonight. Before you this evening also is the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee's job is to review all of the articles that are presented to the town meeting and make their recommendations on action to you. So the Finance Committee has done a lot of work studying these articles, and they're here to present their recommendations. But again, these are recommendations because you are the decision-makers. The Finance Committee members are independent members who are independent of any town department or any other official function in the town. They are appointed by the town moderator to act as your independent reviewers of the warrant articles. The moderator, which in this, tonight is myself, the moderator is also an independent official, elected by the community to represent, to work with all of you to make sure that the town meeting is conducted in a fair and open fashion. That's the goal of the moderator. Your role is to have the articles presented to you, to debate them, and then to decide on how we will act on them. So it's your vote that is the decision-making vote. Let me just talk a little bit about motions, because sometimes it's a little confusing. What we will do tonight is we will consider the articles in the order in which they are presented in the warrant. The warrant is included in the Finance Committee report, which has been made available to anyone here tonight. We had copies. If you hadn't gotten one and you'd like to take a look at it, there are some at the table. Articles are presented by a main motion. The main motion is made by the Finance Committee. After the motion is made and seconded, then there will be opening comments by the Finance Committee member who is responsible for that article. Those comments will be made to all of you and will be followed by, if there is someone who would like to speak, a proponent of the article has the opportunity to also get up and speak and address the town meeting. Statements will follow, whether it be proponents or opponents, so that we have full debate. All town meeting members are eligible to address the town meeting. All we ask is that you be recognized by the moderator and make all your comments through the moderator. This is not a debate among members of the audience or among members of the administration or the Finance Committee. It's a conversation between you, the moderator, and whoever responds to your request. So what we will do is, of course, ask you to, if you're recognized, I would ask you to step up to the microphones. The microphones are there in the corridor here so that you can go and speak to what everybody can hear you. It's important to speak loudly and slowly so everyone can hear, so that that will help with the debate itself. No personal exchanges are permitted at the town meeting. This is a conversation among members of the town meeting through the moderator. What about amendments? As I said, what happens is a main motion is made, we debate that main motion, and there are occasions in which someone from the town meeting or someone else would like to raise an amendment. An amendment can be raised by a motion from the floor, which is seconded by another member of the town meeting, and in that case, that amendment will be discussed. It is the request of the town clerk and the town moderator that any amendment that you offer be made available to the moderator in writing so that we can be sure that we are actually voting on the precise language which you recommend. Discussion on a motion to amend will continue. Once that discussion is over, we will vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes or fails, then we move back to the main motion to consider that motion. So the sequence would be main motion, amendment if any, action on the amendment, followed by going back to the main motion for final consideration. Once debate is over, then vote will be called for by the moderator. Most motions are acted upon by voice vote from the town meeting members. In the event that the moderator is unable to make a determination as to whether or not a motion is accepted or adopted, then he will call for a standing count. A standing count is, would be conducted through the tellers, who will then count those who stand to vote yea and those who stand to vote nay, and then we will conclude that with announcing the result. Most motions, then, will be dealt with by voice vote, but it is possible to have a standing count if it's not clear whether the voice vote prevails. It is possible for you, as members of the town meeting, to request the standing count. If seven members of the town meeting stand following a voice vote and ask for the vote to be a standing count, then we will proceed to a standing count. One special motion is available at the end of town meeting, which is a motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider can be brought to the town meeting to reconsider any article that has been addressed and voted upon at the town meeting. That motion will only be in order at the end of the meeting and only will be acted upon if it is moved and seconded. So word to the wise is, if you are really interested in an article, please stay at the end of the meeting so that you can be sure that that article or the entire town meeting warrant has been acted upon and a final matter. That said, I would now like to ask the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Barubi, to introduce to you the members of the Finance Committee and make an opening statement of the findings of the Finance Committee, which are summarized in your report. Mr. Barubi.
Good evening. I am Peter Barubi. The members of the Finance Committee are Jody Garzon, please raise your hand, Peter Underhill, Joyce Bariardi, Michael Crone, Jonathan Lor, Kathy McGinnis, Sarah Reyes, and Jen Zerutsky. Welcome, and thank you for participating in tonight's Fall Town Meeting. I extend a special welcome back to the podium to Mr. Jim McCaffrey. Thank you, sir, for your continued service to Milis. It's great to see you back. I also extend a warm welcome to our elected state representatives, Representatives James Arona DeRosa and Representative Marcus Vaughn. As well as town officials, committee, board members, volunteers, and many volunteers, including the Clerk's Office. Thank you very much for helping us get things going here. Before I speak about tonight's warrant, I wanted to commend Milis voters for their participation in the recent tri-county Voktech ballot votes. I believe Milis made a difference. We turned out, and consequently, we were heard. Milis voters turned out, excuse me, Milis turnout was tops percentage-wise amongst the 11 tri-county communities, and our town's vote was close. To me, that's a signal that Milis values both traditional and vocational education. After the vote, the Milis School Building Authority increased the state's reimbursement of costs by $20 million. I don't know this for a fact, but that is likely because our concerns were heard. There will be public proceedings in the future to discuss and determine how Milis funds our share of the construction. One more note before we begin. There are nine volunteers on the Finance Committee. Currently, we do not project any vacancies. Typically, three members' terms expire each summer unless a member re-ups and is reappointed at the discretion of the town moderator. However, if you are interested in volunteering to serve on the Finance Committee or any other committee in town, please reach out to the town clerk or the town administrator's office to fill out a volunteer interest form. Now on to what we're here for. Voters tonight, as stated, will be the decision-makers on whether and how the town uses its resources during the remainder of fiscal year 2024 and beyond in the case of some proposed borrowing. There are 12 articles for tonight's, for decision tonight, and we'd like to get started. Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Barubi.
I move that the reading of the warrant and the return of service thereof be omitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the reading of the warrant and return of service thereof be omitted, be omitted. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Barubi.
I move that the moderator be granted unanimous consent to omit the reading of the articles and to refer to them by number and subject matter.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the moderator be granted unanimous consent to omit the reading of the articles and to return to them by number, refer to them by number and subject matter. Discussion of the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Article one.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Bariardi.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $6,815.88, transfer the sum of $71.03 from Sewer Enterprise Reserves, transfer the sum of $1,908.19 from Water Enterprise Reserves, and transfer the sum of $4,428.13 from Stormwater Enterprise Reserves, for a total sum of $13,223.23 for unpaid bills as written in the warrant.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the town do vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $6,815.88, transfer the sum of $71.03 from the Sewer Enterprise Reserve, transfer the sum of $1,098.19 from the Water Enterprise Reserve, and transfer the sum of $4,428.13 from Stormwater Enterprise Reserves, for a total sum of $13,223.23 for unpaid bills as written in the warrant. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Moderator. Prior to discussion, I would like to just clarify that you said the sum of $71.03. I thought I heard $71,000. And I just wanted to, if you could kindly clarify that, sir.
Well, thank you for the correction. Thank you. It's a little rusty up here, you know that.
You're amongst friends, you're fine.
Discussion of the motion.
This article, if approved, is a semi-annual article to fund bills incurred in the previous fiscal years. The bills for this town meeting totaled $13,223.23 and will be funded from free cash, Sewer, Water, and Stormwater Enterprise Reserves. These bills occurred from previous fiscal years. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Further discussion of the article. Any questions? As the article was read, it refers to the warrant, which hopefully everyone has in front of them, with a list of bills. Anyone have any particular questions about any of those? Yes, sir, Mr. Yablonski.
I'm trying to get myself used to understanding some of the terminology. Stan Yablonski, 30 Glen Allen. The top line says appropriate, appropriate and raised by taxation. I haven't heard taxation all mentioned, so that, does that mean that our taxes will not go up based on the money's used for this warrant?
This is coming from free cash, so this is available funds, so no, your taxes will not be going up for this article.
Okay, then can I suggest in the future that you be more specific as to where all these funds are coming from? Because it sounds like the Finance Committee knows where the funds are coming from, but we, the laypeople, here or not here, don't know where it's coming from. So that's all I'm requesting in the future.
Further discussion. No further discussion, then. The motion is in front of you. This requires a four-fifths vote for approval, and the reason for that is it's paying bills from a prior fiscal year, so a four-fifths vote is required. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Article two.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lor.
I move that the town vote to transfer from marijuana impact fees, free cash, the sum of $210,585.3, and transfer from opioid settlement funds, free cash, the sum of $2,520, for a total sum of $213,105.3, for additional wages and expenses not sufficiently funded under Article III, operating budgets of the May 3rd, 2023 Annual Town Meeting, as written in the warrant.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the town vote to transfer from marijuana impact fees, free cash, the sum of $210,585.3, and transfer from opioid settlement funds, free cash, the sum of $2,520, for a total sum of $213,105.3, for additional wages and expenses not sufficiently funded under Article III, operating budgets of the May 3rd, 2023 Annual Town Meeting, as written in the warrant. Discussion of the motion. Ms. Moderator. Ms. Lor.
For Article II, if approved, this article requests to transfer a total of $213,105.3 from available funds to cover the remaining marijuana impact funds request for fiscal year 2024. The total host community agreement, HCA, requests were submitted for the fiscal year 2024 budget for the May 2023, excuse me, 2023 town meeting. The requests could only be funded at the May town meeting with the remaining available certified funds from September 2022. The balance of the requests are now being funded in the November town meeting with funds certified in September 2023. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The Finance Committee passed this unanimously, nine to zero.
Further discussion of the motion. There's a list of positions in here that is also stated in the Finance Committee report. If you have any questions about any one, let me know. No further discussion, then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to adopt Article II, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Article three.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Lor.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $274,373, and transfer from Water Enterprise Reserves, the sum of $42,453, and transfer from Sewer Enterprise Reserves, the sum of $42,453, for a total sum of $359,279, to fund the capital, to fund the following capital items. For the fire department, public safety radios antenna, $89,373. For the town building department, HVAC repairs of $75,000. Water and sewer department, Chevy Silverado pickup truck for $84,906. And for the library department, phase two lighting replacement of $110,000, totaling $359,279.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $274,373, and transfer from Water Enterprise Reserves, the sum of $42,453, and transfer from Sewer Enterprise Reserve, the sum of $42,453, for a total sum of $359,279, to fund the following capital items. And these are listed here. For fire department, public safety radios and antenna, town buildings, HVAC repairs, water and sewer, Chevy Silverado pickup truck, library, phase two of the lighting replacement. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Lor.
For Article III, if approved, request the town to raise and appropriate the transfer from available funds, $359,279, to fund four capital requests for multiple departments for fiscal year 2024. Each fiscal year, the Capital Planning Committee goes through the process to review and prioritize the capital requests from each department. This process helps the Select Board determine which capital items will be considered at each town meeting. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The Finance Committee passed this unanimously, nine to zero.
Discussion of the motion. Any additional comments? All right, with respect to Article III and the motion thereon, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Article four.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Barubi.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $7,100,000 to pay costs of designing, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new well-free PFAS treatment plant, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Parenthesis 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof. All or any portion of the amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote may be obtained through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, and, in that regard, the Select Board and the Treasurer are authorized to execute and deliver any and all documents and agreements that may be required by the trust and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to evidence any such borrowing. The total amount authorized to be borrowed for this project shall be reduced to the extent of any grants or gifts that may be received by the town on account of this project.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $7,100,000 to pay costs of designing, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new well-free PFAS treatment facility, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. All or any portion of the amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote may be obtained through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, and in that regard, the Select Board and the Treasurer are authorized to execute and deliver any and all documents and agreements that may be required by the trust and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to evidence any such borrowing. The total amount authorized to be borrowed for this project shall be reduced to the extent of any grants or gifts that may be received by the town on account of this project. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Barubi.
Milis recognized the existence of PFAS or per- and polyfluoralkyl substances within the drinking water several years ago. Since then, Milis has been complying with DEP and EPA regulations to address PFAS. Milis actively monitors PFAS levels to ensure allowable thresholds are not exceeded and has taken wells offline when PFAS levels exceeded 20 parts per trillion. Milis recently completed construction of a carbon treatment plant at wells one and two, which is now fully operational with zero parts per trillion PFAS detected. Well number three is one of six wells supplying potable water in Milis. Because wells one and two alone are not sufficient to meet Milis water needs, Milis's water needs, and because well three has at time exceeded 20 parts per trillion, it is necessary to construct another PFAS treatment plant using the same highly effective granular-activated carbon filtration technology as the DeAngelis plant at wells one and two. The estimated construction cost for the 2,900 square foot plant at well three is $7.1 million, with the burden for that borrowing to be applied to the Water Enterprise Fund. Milis has secured a $3.5 million EPA grant and is seeking other state grants to offset the total project cost. The current anticipated cost increase to water ratepayers is approximately $100 to $150 per year. If approved by the, by two-thirds of voters, is anticipated that the project will go to bid in January of 2024. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article.
Further discussion of the motion. All right, we'll take a vote on Article four. As Mr. Barubi indicated, this will require a two-thirds vote of the town meeting because it involves a borrowing. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried unanimously. Article five.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Underhill.
I move that the town vote to transfer from cash, the sum of $500,000, for road and sidewalk construction, design, repair, and maintenance.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $500,000, for road sidewalk construction, design, repair, and maintenance. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Underhill.
Every year, the Select Board proposes funds to improve the roads in Milis whenever possible. Our DPW and its director does a fantastic job on keeping it on budget and on time. There were funds allocated last year that are available because our DPW came under budget. They will be added to this $500,000 to continuously improve the roads and sidewalks around Milis. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Further discussion.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Walnut Street. I hope this is the right time and place to talk about this. I have no problem whatsoever with the $500,000, but over the course of several months and years, people have heard me talk about Walnut Street. And I know there's many streets in this town that need a lot of attention, but I was told to bring this subject forward at the town meeting from an email that I have from Town Hall about a month ago. Just a little background, 24 years ago, actually a week from today, 24 years ago, on November 13th, 1999, was the last time that Walnut Street was totally repaved. And the reason I know that is because I was very intimately involved with the town. We had a flooding situation on Walnut Street, and I had to participate with, Town Administrator at that time was Charlie Aspenwall, and some others that are still with us here. And I have a package of 1999 photos, if anyone would like to have a little scrapbook session with me. But what I like to do, again, I don't know if this is the time and place, but I know that we're in the fiscal year where there's no money available to take Walnut Street under action, and the next fiscal year starts in July. So whatever I personally have to do to get the ball rolling and to get involved with the Select Board, do I need to get petition? the Select Board, do I need to get petition going on Walnut Street residents, whatever, but I want to make it publicly aware, because I've talked to several people and I was told to bring it up at town meetings. So whatever I need to do, Select Board, please let me know, invite me to meetings, do whatever I have to do. But after 24 years, we have just had, it's just a bunch of patchwork now, and as a matter of fact, I actually don't even go down Walnut Street anymore. I head north towards Holliston and circle around, because it's, I've seen better roads in Vermont in my seven states than I travel, New England for my job. And they're probably paying about a tenth of what we are in property taxes. So anyway, that's all I have to say, and I invite anyone to get in touch with me, and I would like to get involved in this, pushing this further forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Mr. McKay.
Mr. Moderator, James McKay, Director of Public Works. What we will do, we review, and it's usually at a spring, early time.
You can speak up a little bit, so that everyone can hear.
Sure. In around March, we will get together with the Select Board, and the DPW will recommend roads that are, will be paved in the FY25. Those funds, we don't know how much funds will be available, so we will have to size them up for each road. I can tell you that there was, as the, as stated, there was funds left over this year. We have not closed out FY24 funds yet, so we don't know how much is left over. We do approximately receive $274,000 from the states, from our Chapter Ninety funding sources. So with this $500,000 that will give us, if we just go on what we have, we're talking about almost $750,000. And again, we size up what road has to be done and the cost of it. And we do know where Walnut Street is on the list. We have a list that is, we've gone from bad to poor in most of the roads that we've, you know, that we put on our list every single year. So we will do that at the Select Board, and they do get final approval of what myself and the DPW superintendent recommend for paving for FY25.
Thank you. Further discussion. All right, so we're voting on Article Five, which is the appropriation of $500,000 for road repair. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried unanimously. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chrome.
I move that the town vote to borrow under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, or any other enabling authority, the sum of $573,559 for the purchase of a Vector truck for the Department of Public Works.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the town vote to borrow under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, or any other enabling authority, the sum of $573,559 for the purchase of a Vector truck for the Department of Public Works. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chrome.
The Vector truck would be used by the Department of Public Works to clean storm drains and basins throughout the town, clear main sewer lines, should they become clogged. The Department currently rents a Vector truck from a third party when necessary, but it is not always available when needed. The Department feels that this is a valuable tool in meeting the requirements that they have in keeping the drains and sewers clean in the town. The Finance Commission, Finance Committee, excuse me, recommended approval of this by a vote of eight to one.
Further discussion of the motion. Yes, sir.
Christopher Staples, 190 Village. I was just wondering if, I don't know if the Finance Committee went in this deep, but if you could discuss the size of our town compared to a truck, do neighboring towns of similar sound, of similar size have a truck? It just seems like really expensive. We have a really small town, and do, I mean, it seems like we're going to have a $500,000 truck that's sitting around not doing a lot. I don't know, maybe almost every town with 7,000, 8,000 people has a truck, but it just, can you, do you, does the committee know anything about that, or does the Public Works know anything about the ratio of our town to needs for Vector truck? Thank you.
Discussion. Mr. McKay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. James McKay, Director of Public Works. It's not the size of the town of what a truck in an emergency situation would need to be used. Most of the, most of this comes under unfunded mandates from the EPA that is due as part of our stormwater management, and that's what we would be cleaning with this truck. We would be cleaning out storm scepters. When I presented this to the, actually to the first, to the Capital Planning Committee, the Enterprise Advisory Committee, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee, we do project, I did a year analysis of what we spend on this, on a rented Vector for FY23 and FY24. We projected that the cost was, let me please get it so I can get it correctly, was $36,041.71. As part of our sixth year of our stormwater permit, we will have to start cleaning out storm scepters and cultech systems. The town has 57 of them throughout the town. Most of them are on public property, and they will need to be cleaned out once a year. And the cost of the Vector for today is $225.50 for the Vector. So we do project in FY25, with having this machine, we'll be able to save just on cleaning projects of almost $57,000, $56,000 something. And of course, the price of that goes up. The rental fee for a third-party vendor will go up significantly as time goes on. And it's also, we, it's not that we would just use it for that, we'll use it for water main breaks, that this truck will be able to go in. Milis has a very old water system, and it's very tough to get a water main shut completely down. This truck will be used to suck up water while the crews are in the hole making repairs. If we all remember what a wet spring we had this year, and many floods on Village Street and on Exchange Street, most of that could have alleviated a lot of that problem a lot quicker if we had a truck of this nature. It's not just a, I think you all know what a Vector is, it's got this big hose that sucks up debris and water, and then there's a jet hose on the side, it's a high-velocity hose that goes into the pipe and would free whatever is in its way. When we repaired culverts on this year, on Middle Section Street and Ridge Street, both times we had to rent a Vector to make those repairs. So it's not just, the truck will be sitting there, it will not be just one day a week. I mean, it will be used quite often, and most importantly, it would be used in emergency situations. We also, we know that in each one of the departments, we have these troughs that are in the buildings, and all of them have to be cleaned out, and the debris has to be, you know, taken care of, and this truck will be able to do that. We have in the DPW buildings and the three new buildings that we have, there's one in the fire station, and there's one in the back of the police station that we'll be able to use. Freeing sewers, there's a lot of times that the school, the DPW, will have to call an outside vendor for this high-velocity hose to free up sewer lines coming out into the main system. This truck will be able to do that also.
So, thank you. Further discussion.
Jim Angelo, Levina Street.
Yes, sir.
Instead of a projected cost, can we have an actual cost for like the last three years of what a Vector truck has cost us? And also, if we do buy this truck, are we eliminating the contracts that we have for basin cleaning now?
Mr. McKay.
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
The projected cost was, it was an actual cost, I misspoke, it was the, the actual cost for FY23 and FY24. The cost to clean out the other basins, so it's not projected, it's $56,000 that we will save in FY25. I think I stated that. It was a savings in FY25 of $56,000. We will not eliminate the idea of cleaning catch basins. This truck will not go up and down and clean the catch basins. I think you, when the truck comes up, it's got a clamshell, and it goes into the, it's a totally different type of way to clean a basin. It's cost-effectively, we would not be able, would have to hire, we'd have to buy two of them to clean out the almost 1,300, 1,400 catch basins that we have in the town.
Further discussion. Yes, sir.
Stan Jablonsky, Glen Allen Boulevard. I'm pleased to announce that the Glen Allen community has no need for a Vector truck. We have our own, paid-for, maintained stormwater system, which obviously doesn't stop the town from sending us a stormwater bill two weeks ago, but we proudly pay it to be good citizens. Listening to the numbers being thrown around tonight, my vote will be no, because rent is a lot cheaper than owning, and once you own it, you're going to have to replace it X years later, and we're going to be looking at a $600,000, $700,000 bill then to replace it. So I'm telling everybody now, Glen Allen, especially myself, I think we're going to vote no. Thank you.
Mr. McKay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What I think that our Glen Allen neighbors have to understand, that the roadways leading up to Glen Allen are owned by also, and they have to pay for that maintenance of all those roadways entering into Glen Allen. And that's how the stormwater bill is distributed through all Milis residents. It doesn't just, you know, they're not the Glen Allen residents, they're not the only ones that receive a bill for, from the stormwater. They are, they're received, and it's for the maintenance of the entire town of Milis. The truck, we received a letter, the truck is projected to have an expected life of 20-plus years. I can assure you, Mr. Moderator, that there are trucks in the DPW that we have right now that are over 20-plus years, that are plowing the roads in Milis. And we have a backhoe, the same, it's over 20-plus years. We have a tractor that's over 30-plus years. So the maintenance is done in-house, and we do have a great staff that has maintained all Milis equipment.
Thank you. Further discussion. All right, we'll return to the main motion. Again, the main motion is to vote to borrow the sum of $573,559 for the purpose of purchasing the Vector truck for the DPW. This motion requires a borrowing, therefore, two-thirds majority is required for passage. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion is carried. I do need to announce that the voice vote was a two-thirds majority of those in the room, so therefore, the motion is carried with two-thirds majority. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Reyes.
I move that the town vote to borrow under the provisions of MGL, Chapter Forty-Four, or any other enabling authority, the sum of $136,100 for the lease slash purchase of one bus for the Milis schools.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the town do vote to borrow under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, or any other enabling authority, the sum of $136,100 for the lease purchase of one bus for the Milis schools. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Reyes.
This article is authorized in the town to borrow the sum of $136,100 for the lease slash purchase of one new replacement school bus for the Milis public schools. Authorization to enter into the related lease-to-purchase agreement was previously approved at the May 3, 2023 town meeting. This additional bus is being requested as a result of the increase in lease costs between the time of the initial estimate of the lease costs approved at the May 3 town meeting for six new buses and when the new leases were actually signed. The difference in costs at that point would only allow for the lease slash purchase of five new buses instead of the six that were requested and approved. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this motion. This vote requires two-thirds majority.
Further discussion. All right, we will move to vote on Article Seven, and as indicated, this will involve a borrowing, so a two-thirds majority is required for adoption. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion is carried by two-thirds majority. For those of you who do not know Kate Federoff, she's really very good. You should get to know her. Anyway, Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. McGinnis.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,800 for an OPEB actuarial study.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,800 for an OPEB actuarial study. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. McGinnis.
This study is required every other year. If approved, the results will calculate the future healthcare costs for retirees, which is what OPEB Other Post-Employment Benefits is for. The Finance Committee unanimously voted to approve this article.
Further discussion of the article. All right, we'll move to vote on Article Eight. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Boyardi.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $320,784 to the Special Education Stabilization Fund.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $320,784 to the Special Education Stabilization Fund. Discussion of the motion.
This article, if approved, will fund Special Education Fund, which was established at the 2023 Spring Town Meeting to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of the special education and recovery high school programs, out-of-district tuition, or transportation. The balance in such reserve funds shall not exceed 2% of the annual net school spending of the school district. Fund should only be distributed from the reserve fund after a majority vote of school committee and a majority vote of Select Board. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Further discussion of the article. Yes, sir.
Jim Angelo, 34 Lavina Street. Does the school have a regular stabilization fund? And if they do, why are we taking funds out of the regular budget to put money into one of their education funds?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Schultz. It's important to project, Mr. Schultz. It's important to project. Is the microphone on? Can people hear him?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
And you.
All right. The question was, does the school have its own stabilization fund? The answer is, no, they don't. There is a stabilization fund for the town. If you recall, at the last town meeting, we took several hundred thousand dollars, $400,000 out of stabilization fund to use to fund sped. This is a state law that allows us to create a special stabilization fund just for sped issues. We are fortunate to have over $3 million of free cash, and we thought this was a great place to put some of it for future unanticipated sped increases. So there is no sped fund for, stabilization fund for the school. This will be only usable for sped, not even just general school expenses.
Further discussion. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Following the microphone transfer, Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zirinsky.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $300,000 to the MGL, Chapter Forty-One, Section 111-F Injury Leave Indemnity Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $300,000 through the Massachusetts General Fund, Chapter Forty-One, Section 111-F Injury Leave sum of $300,000 to the Massachusetts General Fund, Chapter 41, Section 111-F Injury Leave Indemnity Fund. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Zerinsky.
This fund is a legally required operating fund to cover the medical expenses for town police and firefighters injured on the job who have met the insurance coverage threshold. The funds are drawn from every payroll to cover the expenses for such employees. The current balance in the fund as of October 16th, 2023, is $134,189.56. There are currently three town employees injured due to separate incidents, and their return to work date has not yet been set. Their annual base pay is approximately $273,000. Hence, the Finance Committee unanimously recommended an additional transfer of $300,000 from free cash to ensure the town obligations were met for another year.
Further discussion of the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Article Eleven.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Garzon.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to the OPEB Trust Fund account.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the town do vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to the OPEB Trust Fund account. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Garzon.
This article would add funds to the other post-employment benefits funds. Currently, the town has about $260,000 in the OPEB Trust account. It's covering claims as needed out of the general operating budget. However, the estimated shortfall to cover all estimated obligations is about $50 million. So we do need to be consistently setting aside additional funds for future OPEB needs. Doing so will help our bond ratings as we look forward to borrowing funds for future town needs. For this fall town meeting, the Select Board is requesting $50,000 to be moved from free cash to the OPEB Trust Fund account, and the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Further discussion of the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twelve.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Garzon.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $700,000 to the Stabilization Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $700,000 to the Stabilization Fund. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Garzon.
The town of Milis has adopted a policy to maintain a stabilization fund equal to 5% of its annual general fund budget expenditures. This is to be used for unforeseen and emergency purposes. There is a graph in our Finance Committee report that shows the fund balance in comparison to the target balance from fiscal year 2012 to 2024. For this fall town meeting, the Select Board is requesting $700,000 be moved from free cash to the Stabilization Fund, which will put our account balance at about 5.5% of our FY24 budget, and this should set us well for maintaining our target balance for at least another fiscal year and hopefully longer. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Further discussion of the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Mr. Moderator. Before I recognize the next motion, I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Appreciate your attendance and your participation. Mr. Barubi.
I move to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded, the meeting adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.